Okay, now we start the item eight. Accept City Manager's mid-year financial report for the fiscal year 2024-25.
I think I'd have this microphone thing down by now. Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Christine Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services, here with you for our second item. Seated next to me is a new face you might not have seen, is Toni Owase Anderson, who is our Acting Budget Manager at the current moment as we are, Budget Manager position is vacant, and she'll be assisting me with the presentation this evening. Before I jump into the presentation, I just want to take a quick moment. I want to first acknowledge my team in Administrative Services. We've been down a budget manager for about the last nine months, and so that's meant that a lot of folks have had to step up, take on different responsibilities, as Toni's sitting next to me. We even have our HR Division honing in some new skills and helping us with some analysis, and so it's really been quite the team effort to get through these last nine months of budget, especially considering all of the changes that have happened. I also want to acknowledge Finance Manager Jonathan Orozco, who's sitting behind us here for his efforts as well in stepping up, kind of taking on additional roles with budget as well. On top of that, I want to make sure I acknowledge the departments and their staff. We throw a lot of changes at them, a lot of asks, and sometimes last minute. We appreciate their efforts in helping us get this presentation and document before you. I say this at many council meetings when I'm presenting the budget. I get to be up here presenting to you generally with another one of my team members, but the hard work that goes into getting this document together is really a citywide effort. And so I just want to thank, again, the directors and their team for their assistance in getting this. And then, last but not least, I want to also thank City Manager Pamela Wu for her support and her direction. With that, I will jump right into the presentation. So this year's mid-year is going to be slightly different than previous mid-years in that you'll see a large focus on the 10-year forecast update. Historically, we've done these updates as part of proposed, or as necessary if there were major changes that occurred that we wanted to inform council of the impacts on the long-term forecast. We'll do a brief update in terms of where we are in mid-year. Usually, we do a little bit more of a robust update. Rest assured, all of that information still exists in the staff report, so if you have any questions about that, I'm more than happy to answer those. We will, of course, go over any proposed budget -- let me just show up when I'm in PowerPoint mode. We will go over any mid-year budget adjustments as well. So any requests that staff is asking to make, and we'd like council to consider for approval. And then we'll look at a proposed budget look ahead. So there's a few things coming up on the horizon for budget. We want to make sure it's on council's radar. We'll cover those items. And then, I like to say, the long-awaited return of the budget roadmap, but that's just because I like the graphic. But I think it's a good tool to show us kind of where we are in terms of the budget process and the different pieces that help build the budget. So with that, we want to take you back in time to when our budget woes began, and that is back in December of 2021. We received a letter from the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, who is responsible for collecting and administering sales tax. And they let us know that they were auditing one of our major taxpayers. Fast forward to March of 2023. We have a meeting with CD-TFA. They advised us verbally of the decision that they plan to make and let us know that they will have some numbers to follow within four to six months. Staff wastes no time, and we begin looking at budget reductions for fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24. And overall, you'll see this number pop up several times in the presentation, but over those two years, with direction from council, with community outreach and work from staff, we were able to reduce the budget by $23.8 million. And then in October 2024, just about six short months ago, we, City Attorney, successfully negotiated a settlement agreement that allowed the city to retain prior sales tax that the city had already collected and received. And that gave us some kind of clarity on how we might move forward as well. As part of that, presentation in November and in December with quarter one, I committed to come back to council at mid-year with an updated 10-year forecast to understand kind of what had happened since then. And there are some other things, aside from CD-TFA, that you'll see as we go through are really major drivers and why we're seeing some changes to our forecast. So just a quick reminder how we got here. We talked about that audit. That audit, the dollars that really related to it were a 73% reduction in property tax, really a 28% reduction in overall revenue in the general fund, or $30 million. And the outcome of that was that we were structurally deficit, which meant that our revenues, our expenditures exceeded our revenues in all years of our forecast. And so staff jumped into action to try to figure out where reductions could be made. So let's talk about the reductions that we made. So in fiscal year '24, we reduced by $15.1 million, the bulk of that being a reduction to transfer to other funds. Actually, a large portion of this was our funding of our maintenance of effort for our street and sidewalk program, because our Public Works Department had done such a good job, based on direction from council to invest in this infrastructure, that we could pull back the funding but maintain our pavement condition index, PCI. The other area we looked at was materials and contracts. That was another large area. And then also staffing. So we reduced 13 vacant positions, so we were able to get through without any layoffs. And that was fiscal year '23-'24. Fiscal year '24-'25, or the current fiscal year that we're in, we switched directions in terms of how we were looking at reductions. And we really wanted to make sure that we could explain if there was a community impact or what that impact might look like. And so we developed different categories to kind of put our reductions in. Fiscal accountability was really more related to making sure that our budget aligns with our prior-year costs and where we're going. Operations and maintenance, I believe, trying to reimagine some services, bring some services in-house that had previously been outsourced. And then infrastructure, the biggest piece here was really the transfer out to the Capital Reserve. Then when we looked at our original forecast, we really couldn't afford, we had to kind of do a pause on CIP transfers in the first five years of that forecast. There are some footnotes, and I just want to go over them briefly. I've been showing different tables showing budget reductions, and there is one for fiscal year '24 that's slightly different. We did not include transfers previously in the table that we showed, and that was just because transfers didn't really have a service-level reduction related to them. And so we kind of pulled those out of the discussion, but they're shown here to show the overall reductions that were made. The second on fiscal year '25 is community benefits. That .1 was related to Fourth of July fireworks, but those have since been added back by City Council at the February 4th council meeting. This is just a different way, so we're trying to show graphics. So we show you pie charts, and then this just provides a little bit more of the detail on the summary side, some that I've already explained verbally. So I'll move on from this slide. Just wanted to make sure we had different ways to show. I think this is an important slide to talk about the reductions that were made. And so let's remind you what the forecast looked like as part of the proposed and final budget. As you can see, we had a slight deficit estimated for fiscal year '25, a couple of years of, you know, some slight surpluses, and then we began reductions. So let's talk about what's happening. So the first is we went from the 1.1 to the .3. This is a built-in recession scenario. This will have to move in the forecast as we move along in the years, and, you know, it seems like a recession is inevitable, yet it doesn't seem to be coming to fruition. So we'll keep a watch on that to see if that needs to be moved in the forecast. Currently, we have it there. The next, as I mentioned, is resuming the annual transfer to the Capital Reserve of $2 million. That kind of causes our first major negative in this forecast. The second is really related to the sunset of our UUT in 2030. In addition, there is a bit of an offset, so you'll see we go from 2.8 to 5.2. In fiscal year 2030, we finished paying off our debt service. So the debt that the city currently has at about 2.6, 2.7 million annually, that's paid off and comes off our books, so that has a positive impact to our forecast. But ultimately, looking out, we still had a $7.2 million deficit in year 10 of the forecast, or fiscal year '34. Year 10 and fiscal year '34, important things to remember as I kind of walk you through the rest of these slides, because we're really going to be doing the bulk of our comparison based on that last year. So let's talk about what's changed since we adopted the budget. So reminding you of that $7.2 million deficit. I tried to do some color coding with the boxes here, just because there's a lot of stuff I'm going to be showing you, so I'm just giving you a heads-up, there's color coding. And so red will generally, when you see those red boxes, I'm tying back to that number. So we have the $7.2 million deficit. To that, we're going to add the changes as part of mid-year that we're going to be talking about. First is revenue increases of $5.95 million. To that, we also reduced expenditures by $1.77 million, which means we end that $7.2 deficit becomes a .52 surplus in year 10 of the forecast. So let's dig a little deeper in terms of what's happening. So in this table, we're showing you the changes by different revenue and expenditure categories to try to highlight for the council and the public what were the major things that changed that kind of flipped this forecast. A little yellow box on the right, because that's where we're going to focus on. That's the last fiscal year. But when we get down to the expenditure categories, you'll understand why I've put in fiscal year '26 as well. So we're not going to cover all of these categories, but I'm going to cover the ones that had the biggest impact. Again, detail exists in the staff report on what's happening in some of these other categories. When it comes to property tax, the way our model is built is it built off of what happened previously. So our historicals really kind of drive where we're going to in the future. And so when it comes to property tax, we ended with property tax higher than we originally budgeted. So once we inputted the new numbers that were higher by about $1 million, it increased kind of the out-years in our forecast as well. You can see from fiscal year '26 to fiscal year '34, there wasn't a huge change. And that's really because most of our projection models stayed the same, just the first year had a slight increase to it. The next thing we're going to cover is franchise fees, which is a similar thing what's happening in property taxes. Our actual numbers came in higher than when we had budgeted, so we add in the new actual number, and it helps reset our forecast. Use of money in property, this is interest earnings. As you will see in a moment when I give you the updated chart, the first model assumed we were going to be using fund balances starting in about year six of the forecast straight through. So we had those red bars. Those red bars means we did not have enough. We'd have to pull from fund balance to balance or bring in additional revenues or reduce expenditures further. And you'll see why this number went up when I show you the updated forecast. Miscellaneous, this is really related to, there was a successful agreement for the lease of our water system, and this pertained to a payment related to that lease agreement. The lease agreement is for 12 years, and so we see this flow through the whole 10 years of our forecast. That got us to the 5.95 that was on the previous slide in terms of revenue additions. When it came to expenditure changes, fiscal year, in fiscal year '26 for employee compensation and benefits, the bulk of this number is related to council's decision to fund an additional discretionary payment, or what we'll refer to as an ADP, toward our retirement system, which is CalPERS. And what this did is this really resulted in a significant amount of savings in the general fund, but it goes down as the forecast goes through, because then we'll, at a certain point, we kind of line up back to our original numbers without the payment. But the other component here that's really driving these numbers is, as you may recall, as part of our work on our forecast last year, we added a vacancy savings factor, 2% at the time. We wanted to go back, and as I mentioned, we're always kind of looking to refine and understand if the numbers we're using are the best numbers. So we went back and looked historically, as far back as we could, which is about 10 years, to see where our vacancies, like what percent of vacancy savings we had reached. The lowest year was 4%. So we went ahead and increased that vacancy rate from 2% to 4%. That's another major driver. So in total, 1.77 in fiscal year '34, or year 10 of the forecast, gets you to the 7.72. And this is our current new forecast. So I'm going to walk you through some of the changes, but before I go into that, remember the negative bars? They went positive. So that is more dollars coming into the city versus being used, and that's part of what's driving our increased interest earnings. We simply have more, the pot of money has gotten larger that we're pulling from. But let's talk about the first very big negative red bar in the forecast. This is really the use of fund balance for that additional ADP payment. We pulled $10 million to make that payment. That's where you see that negative. Recession scenario is still in here. Sunset of the UUT and the payment of our debt service is still in here. But we're at a .5 million positive in surpluses. And this is all great news, and I think it's, you know, it's a good moment to take pause and reflect on all the hard work, like I said, that has been done, really as a collaborative effort between council, the community, and staff for the good work that we've done. But there's a but, and the but is this. In the last three years of the forecast, we have dwindling surpluses, which is indicative that our expenditures are continuing to outpace our revenues. With the likelihood, as we go through and we're making adjustments to budget, whether at proposed or mid-year or through a council agenda item, we still need to be cautious about our ongoing expenditures. I think we still need to look to pursue either additional revenue sources or potentially look at reducing expenditures further. I think the good story here is we're out of the woods for the, you know, pretty medium-term future. I feel like five is short-term, 10 feels a little longer, but it feels like for the medium-term, we'd be in good shape. But we have healthy fund balances, right? That's another good thing working in our favor. But to remain vigilant and cautious as we look at adding ongoing expenditures into our budget. With that, I will give you a little break from hearing from me and hand it over to Toni.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. As Director Alfaro mentioned, I will now focus on the general fund mid-year update. So this slide shows how the general fund has changed since adoption to first quarter to mid-year. Budgeted revenues, as you can see, are $122.1 million unchanged from the first-quarter report, and expenditures are at $129.8 million, reflecting an increase of $10.7 million from the first quarter, primarily due to the additional discretionary payment, or ADP, as mentioned in the previous slides. This has resulted in an increased use of fund balance of $7.7 million. This slide shows changes to estimated fund balance by category. We will be focusing primarily on the final two columns of this table. First, overall fund balance has decreased from $169.8 million to $152.8 million. This, again, is primarily due to the ADP payment for retirement services. In addition, we want to call your attention to changes in the committed reserves, increasing significantly. This is due to staff originally assuming council would unassign the bulk of the sales tax repayment reserve. Instead, council renamed the reserve for future use and kept $64.5 million in the committed category. The opposite side of this change can be seen in the unassigned category, where we see a reduction from $106.2 million to $25.3 million. Next, I will cover the proposed mid-year budget adjustments. So overall, in the general fund, $4.1 million is requested in expenditures, which is offset by $13,619 in estimated revenue, resulting in the estimated use of fund balance of $4.1 million. The Innovation Technology Department is requesting to transfer part-time savings from their general fund to their internal service fund budget to cover necessary part-time costs in that fund to backfill an employee that will be on paid leave. Administrative Services is requesting $25,000 to cover an additional executive recruitment. Currently, we have one executive recruitment budgeted for. Parks and Recreation is asking to budget revenue and expenditures related to proceeds from the Hidden Treasures event. Non-departmental accounts for transfers out of the general fund into other funds. Staff is requesting $2,070,000 as a transfer to the Capital Reserved Fund to bring it to policy funding levels of $5 million. An additional $2 million is also requested to transfer to the Capital Reserve to resume the annual transfer to the Capital Reserve to fund future CIP projects. And lastly, the savings in IT are included in this transfer line. For the Capital Reserve Fund, you see the transfer in of $4,070,000. And note that there is no expense request here. So by approving this transfer, council is approving the move of cash from one fund to another, but staff still needs to return with a plan on how to appropriate these funds. That will occur as part of the CIP process in April and also in May as part of the proposed budget process. In the internal service funds, we see the transfer in from general fund as revenue in addition to the request to spend those funds as an expenditure request. This results in a net zero impact to fund balance. Public Works is also requesting $33,700 to fund the purchase of a large commercial mower. Overall, staff is requesting $4.2 million in expenditure increases, which is offset by $4.1 million in revenue increases, which results in a little over $50,000 in fund balance use across all funds. So that covers the proposed mid-year budget adjustments. Now we'll move into staffing. So this slide indicates that there are no staffing changes recommended at this time. And this slide covers the City Manager's discretionary fund, and as of December 31st, 2024, no funds have been spent. At this time, I'll pass it over back to Director Alfaro to cover next steps and recommendations.
So as promised, we're giving a quick proposed budget preview on some changes you can expect to see. First is reporting on vacant positions. This is part of a new legal requirement due to Assembly Bill 2561 that requires us to report out on vacant positions and recruitment efforts along with a couple of other items. So this will be part of our proposed budget. It's required to be part of a public hearing that it's reported out on. So this is a change. The other thing we'd be looking at is bringing back the, I forget what the "I" stands for, but the implementation plan for the budget format changes, sorry about that, to council for their review in terms of where we might make changes to budget and then also potentially letting you know if there are some low-hanging fruit that we were able to get to before, by the time the document was printed. We'll also point those out as well. The council can expect to hear about our capital improvement program in April, and we'll work with our Public Works Department to see if we can, depending on how fast that process goes, how those can be included in the proposed. Otherwise, pages would be rolled into our final budget. The other item related to the budget is the council work program. As you know, you have been working fast and furiously on that project. So our goal is to make sure that, we'll make sure we roll those into the proposed budget as well. And some of that is just timing in terms of, when I say proposed budget, if it makes it into the binder versus if it's discussed as part of the proposed budget study session. So we're looking to try to get as much as we can into the binder that you will get on May 1st. The next, I alluded to earlier, but will be a funding request for council to consider relooking at potential tax measures as we are close to kind of closing the gap on our structural, our ongoing structural deficit. We think it's important just to take kind of a view of what might be available for council's consideration for potential inclusion into the 2026 ballot. Other items is working closely with Rochelle Sanders, our Parks and Recreation Director. She has been working fast and furiously with her staff, and we are going to be, in this year, a bit of a change, including the festival and fee waivers in the actual binder for proposed budget along with community funding requests. Historically, because of timing, those haven't made it into the proposed budget binder. We've presented those as part of the proposed budget hearing in our PowerPoint presentation and then rolled them into the final budget document. But you'll get those the same time you get the rest of the document this year. And so those are kind of some of the bigger things we see on the horizon for proposed budget. And again, the much-awaited return to our roadmap to budget adoption. I apologize, we've been a little delayed in getting this graphic up here, so you will see a lot of the, I'll call them spaces, are grayed out. That means that's something that's already occurred. I will not take much of your time walking you through down memory lane on what you've already done. I will focus on the, last night, you had a meeting on the council work program. You reviewed your goals and selected your top priorities. Just moments ago, we were reviewing budget format, and then the red outline on this box is just indicative of where we currently are. And so we are at the mid-year and update financial forecast to City Council. Between March and April, we're looking to confirm or finalize the city work program. In April, we'll be doing our annual community budget meeting along with outreach on the budget. And then, again, as mentioned previously, you will be receiving the capital improvement program, at least the first draft of it, for your review. In May, we're looking at having our proposed budget hearing and including the CIP along with that hearing. And then we'll be bringing our third-quarter financial report as part of the second meeting in May, all with the goal of getting to the end to get an adopted budget in June of 2025. So with that, we have recommendations for this evening up on your screen for council's consideration. That concludes our presentation, and we're available to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, thank you. This time, we'll start with Councilmember Mohan and Councilmember Wong and the Frue and Vice Mayor.
You'll go first?
Switch around.
Thank you, Director Alfaro and Manager. So I'm somewhat familiar with this, because I did attend a prep session not so long ago. But I just wanted everyone's attention to go to the '24-'25 slide where you talked about the deductions that were made in '24 and the deductions made in '25. I don't know where, what page it's on. I can show it to you on the main report. On the main report, it's on -- Got it?
No.
In any case.
Is this the slide you were thinking of?
Let me see. The title says budget reductions in '23-'24 and '24-'25.
This one.
That's the one. Okay, so I just wanted to have everyone look at this. I'm sure all of us have, but to get to where we are today, you know, sometimes we forget the hard decisions that have been made over the last two years. In FY '24, for example, there was a $15.1 million reduction, and the big part of it was the staffing. You know, to lose 13 full-time positions for an organization of our size is a huge reduction and a huge impact on services. And sometimes in the midst of all our conversations, we forget how much of an adjustment was made in city staffing in FY '24. FY '25, again, we eliminated two project managers. We aligned the law enforcement cost. You know, the July 4th fireworks got a lot of visibility. You know, the July 4 fireworks got, got a lot of visibility. But I also wanted to sort of commend council and staff for making the hard decisions over the last couple of years, which have led us to where we are today and where we can comfortably project a solid budget, at least for the next 29, five, six years, five or six years. The other point I wanted to make was 2030 is when things start to change somewhat dramatically. And I think you, you mentioned that the utility user tax was going to expire in 2030. So what does that mean? Is that a ballot measure? Is that how it's extended?
Correct. So the utility user tax, when it was passed, had a sunset date on it, which means either it goes away or we need to return to the voters to have them vote again to continue that tax measure.
Okay. So that is something you will start preparing for, what, in 2028 or so?
Likely in, we can wait till, so it actually sunsets in 2028. So we want to make sure we bring it potentially to council in 2026 so that we can shore up those funds and it would help impact our forecast. Otherwise, if we go into it to 2028, we won't really, like, we're just playing the chance of not knowing what impact that might have. If it doesn't pass, it may mean we need to shift, make a sudden shift than we otherwise might have.
Right. And I mentioned, and you mentioned that there was an offset with the end of the loan, the certificate of participation, loan payment that will end around the same time.
Yeah, so that with the UUT sunsets in 2028 and in 2030 is when we pay off our certificates of participation or our debt service.
Okay. So on another topic, your budget forecasts are pretty much sort of, at a moment in time, you haven't looked at future developments, for example?
Correct. So unless something is permitted, we generally do not include it in our forecast.
Okay, so it's, it's a pretty conservative forecast that you come up with.
Correct. We don't want to count our chickens before they hatch.
Okay. So regardless, we've been seeing the fairly dramatic reduction in sales tax over the years. And that doesn't look like that trajectory is going to change in the foreseeable future. So I just wanted to point out, I think for the future of our city, sales tax, it's going to take us a while to get, it's going to take us a very long time to get back to where we were. And I think the new tax revenue, I'll just finish my sentence, Mayor, is really the property tax. The property tax is showing an upward trajectory over the next few years. And, you know, traditionally, we've always talked about sales tax being a primary revenue source for a city. And maybe some of that thinking will have to change with, you know, rapid reduction in sales tax and, but compensated with, by increase in property tax. So I think a new way of looking at city revenues. And that's all I wanted to say for now. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, budgets are never easy. They always require a lot of work. Costs are easy to figure out, revenues are hard to figure out because they never, never certain, right? So costs are hard costs and fraud, waste and abuse is an easy place to also look as well. I want to go back to your base case on property tax because that's where we're generating a lot of revenues. And here's where I'm a little concerned on the base case. We have population decline, our property values are down 9%. We have deferred maintenance along the way, borrowing costs are going up. Why the belief that our property revenues are going to continue to go up?
We look at, so we, we take a very close look at what's happening in Cupertino specifically. And so a couple of things when it comes to property tax. One is there is a max limit for which the county can increase on an annual basis. It's up to 2% that they can do that. The other piece that drives it is generally change in ownership. And what we've been noting in Cupertino, as the interest rates are going up, we actually thought there, we might see between the interest rates increasing and still a pretty robust or kind of waiting to see when we come out of COVID, right, what the telework environment might look like. We thought we would see some declines, but with, working with HDL, who helps us kind of gather our information, work through it, they said these trends are actually not hitting the city of Cupertino. We're still seeing big exchanges happening and a lot of that is because a lot of our homeowners have held on to properties for a very long time. And so although the sales may be down, we're seeing the median price continue to go up and we're seeing of the amount of sales that are turning over. We generally are, we try to be conservative in what we forecast for property taxes, knowing all those items, and we're still seeing increases that are beating our proposed budget.
So the $400,000 home that's now $4 million is getting transferred, is what you're saying?
Correct.
And it's adjusting a base. Okay. So the other question I have on FTE reduction, I want to be clear here, like, some of the FTEs that were reduced, those weren't positions that had people there before, those were requests, right, that were taken off? Or do we actually let go of people?
So yeah, so some of them were positions that were added and may not have been filled, but some of them were positions that were just vacant at the time. And we let departments know, this is, so hey, you might want to hold some vacancies, we're going to be in a budget crisis. I would say to you, if you asked me or some of my, if we could have the positions that we lost back, we could accomplish more, we could do more with those.
Understood, understood. But there were 28 FTEs at some point.
People were not laid off.
People were not laid off. At one point, we had 28 FTEs floating around. We took 13, 14 of them out, is what we said. So I just want to be clear on that one. And then the piece where I see the most amount of cost savings that are there, and I don't know why we haven't looked at this, and just wanting to understand staff's position here is, have we looked at all these expensive consulting projects from recycled water to all these folks where council priorities may have shifted? Why don't we take, why haven't we looked at an opportunity to cut some of those projects? Because there's a lot of consulting contracts out there.
So I will tell you, we did look at that. So we had departments go line by line through their budget to understand what could be reduced. I think a piece of working for what we consider a contract city, right? So we, we have a contract for our law enforcement, we have a, we are kind of outsourced our fire, and we run a pretty lean staff. And so what that means is, as opposed to a larger city, maybe that San Jose, that may have several different people that are specialists in an area, we are generally generalist. And so there is that need that exists when the expertise is not in-house to hire a consultant to come in. That means the staff that's in place probably has 85, 90% of the knowledge that they need. It's that 10% they may not be experts in that they need to bring that in. But contracts were a big place that we asked departments to go figure out, can you bring it in-house? IT looked at us and said, which of these programs do you actually need are actually useful? Actually, I can point you to a story of being, walking down the hallway and actually hearing one of our IT managers negotiating their contracts, saying, hey, we're in a budget bind and like, if you want to continue to do business with us, we're going to need you to cut us a deal. And so all of those things, we don't necessarily talk about publicly, but departments were out there. I mean, if you think about the, it's contracts or your people.
I totally understand that. I fully appreciate that. I think my question's a little bit more specific. How can we, as a council, help you figure out what projects we no longer are interested in so that we can actually help you cut some of those projects?
I'll defer that to the city manager.
I can take that question. And Councilmember Wong, that's a great question. I think you started doing that yesterday in prioritizing your, at the city work program. And the next step is the CIP. So by taking council's instruction on what area that we should focus moving forward, that will help us to kind of start looking at refining the contracts.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Frue.
Picking up a bit on where Councilmember Mohan went, I wanted to go back to, I think it's slide 10, which compares the fiscal year financial budget forecast with fiscal year '25 mid-year forecast? Yep, that's the one. And I noticed that transient occupancy tax is expected to continue to decline. So are we just expecting that hotels are never going to see their business again in 10 years? Is that effectively what we're saying?
Yeah, so we're seeing, we're just not seeing the recovery there that we would like to see that would help us improve that number. And again, that's putting in kind of our actuals on what we're actually seeing happening and running it through. This is one we'll continue to watch closely. In the, in the actual staff report, we talk about, it, it looks like occupancy-wise, we're looking almost kind of pre-pandemic in some ways, but we're just not seeing the average daily rate come up at the same times. We're not quite sure kind of what's causing that disconnect, but it's something we'll, again, we'll continue to monitor that. This used to be, I think, our third highest revenue source, but we're just, just not seeing it recover the way we would like to.
Got it. So am I, am I translating that correctly as people are coming and they're staying, but they're not being charged as much as they were before? Okay, all right. So, so basically because there's plenty of other places to stay, there's lots of competition, I would assume, and...
Potentially. We haven't done that analysis to understand what's causing that, but...
Got it, okay. And this, this, I mean, again, this is looking out as far as it is, but are we thinking about anything in between with regard to some of the major tourism events that are likely to be happening here in the interim? Things like FIFA World Cup? Things like FIFA World Cup and so forth that are happening in our, in our vicinity?
It's farther out. I think it'd be hard to, I mean, we're, we're close, but we're not close, close, right? So I mean, Santa Clara likely be the bigger area where that might be covered, so we may get some residual. I mean, if, speaking of my own opinion, I have no research to back this up, I think one of the, if you're looking for somewhere to stay, you likely want to be close to public transit because you've ever tried to get in and out of Levi's Stadium. It's difficult, right? That that might be another barrier that folks might be look, but I, we don't know, we don't know what that impact might be.
Okay, all right. And then going back to the property tax question, I just wanted to underscore, this is a conservative projection that you may make based on trends, yes?
Correct. That was important for us because that is now our biggest source of revenue. We want to be as realistic as we can be, but we also don't want to be falling a few million dollars short in this projection because we're being aggressive. So it is still very conservative. And again, this is, every year, we, we look at this at least two or three times a year. We're going to continue to look at it and update it based on things that we're seeing and new information that comes in.
Got it. And then because you had mentioned the expression, you know, permits that have been granted, obviously then VAALCO is not included in this figure.
It is not.
Great, okay, all right. So there's, there's lots of opportunity there is what I'm, what I'm reading.
Correct. So there's other things, right, that are not included in the forecast that may, if they come to fruition, right, would have a major impact on the city.
Okay, I'll reserve my minute and a half.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Thank you for providing the, the study session beforehand, the prep session. That was very helpful. I was wondering what governs the content of this quarterly report? Is there a city policy that's governing the content or state law or some combination?
Not that I'm aware of. I think it's just poodle financial management to come to the council on a regular basis to give you an update on city finances and where we are. So historically, this document has also grown, like our proposed and final budget book, as folks have asked for either more information on one item or the other, more, we preach to be a lot more general fund focused, but some like, hey, the other funds are important too, can you guys do a similar write-up? So it's kind of evolved based on what we've heard folks wanted to see in it. But most, if you look at quarterlies, mid-years in other cities, it's usually a couple of things. I'm comparing myself to where I was last year and then I'm forecasting where I think I'm going to end the year.
Okay, thank you. So I had made a request in, regarding the account balances. And the response I got was that it is not germane to this topic. And so I'm kind of wondering if there are some changes that we can make with regards to the quarterly reporting. So on our, on our website for informational memos, you'll see the quarterly investment treasurer's report. I'm sorry, I might have a different title. I think this is the monthly investment. No, it's quarterly, sorry. I got it right. We have the quarterly report and it shows the ending balances of our accounts there. So about $300 million at the close of the quarter, December 31st, total cash and investments. So that, that's actually some information I think that we would benefit from having in this quarterly report moving forward. Now, there was a chart showing the recession scenario and I'd like to hear a little bit more information about that. How long the recession, how bad a recession are, are you anticipating for that chart? And if we could look at the chart again, I think it might help. And lastly, festival fee waivers was mentioned, that we did have a subcommittee that was working on a policy for that, which was halted. That was at the end of 2022. Just for fellow council members, I think we, we got through the grant process policy and we were starting on festival fees, fee waivers. And I would, my preference, and I'll mention this another time during this item, is that that a subcommittee get restarted. So did you find the chart?
I think I've got the, if video could share my screen. It's this chart. So you will see, this is a very mild recession that we're forecasting here. It's holding, kind of, it's really more of holding some of our figures, eliminating the growth in that year. So assuming things would really, our major revenue base, revenue category, sorry, I couldn't find the word, our major revenue categories would stay mostly flat. And it's only a one year that we're predicting currently. So it's a very mild one year, mostly holding our revenue increases, assuming those bases would stay flat. I will point out that historically, for Cupertino, aside from the 2000.com bust, the great recession, what we saw in Cupertino compared to other cities or agencies across the state and the country, is that we saw that very thing happen, is that our revenues kind of held where they were, where other agencies saw it dip backwards. And so that's why we're not, we don't really have enough data to understand what the next recession might look like and then the impact. So we're predicting a mild one. Again, we continue to keep an eye on that, working with our council to kind of understand, hey, we, we get our sales tax revenue about six months in arrears. So we're always looking for data to show, is something on the horizon? Are we seeing some reductions coming that we shouldn't be aware of? But I think to answer your question, it's mild and more of, of holding tight on our revenues.
Okay, thank you. And I would like to call the council's attention to Attachment G, PDF page 188. There are a number of projects which have dollar amounts associated with them that didn't have dollar amounts previously. And $500,000 towards business continuity resilience. Staff is considering making improvements to the EOC later this fiscal year. That kind of butts up against the city work program items that we were discussing yesterday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So you mentioned that we will be considering potential ballot major for 2026. But I think one of the proposed work program item, we discussed just yesterday, where I proposed a few potential ballot majors, I don't think the council had an interest in any of that. So what do you have in mind?
This is meant to be informational again, so just to, we did this about a year ago. So just to provide versus just looking at one or two is kind of, here's the menu of options for council's consideration.
So we will do that review again. Okay, that's fine. So I see that in the staff report says the, in the, in amended budget, total full-time FTE is to 207. And so that's after we reduced the 13 FTE from, from last year, right?
Correct, so it's the 13...
So it was to 20.
13 FTEs and there were also an additional two FTEs that were reduced in '25.
And then I think in the supplemental report, you mentioned there, there was a list of vacant position. How many did I count? 21 vacant positions now. And so they are in the process of recruitment. So we are not considering to not fill these 21 vacancies.
I think all departments are looking at their vacancies now, trying to determine that need to fill. I think departments have held off in filling a lot of vacancies, so you will see some of our vacancies have kind of spanned one, maybe two years. There was a lot of uncertainty still around the budget. And as you can imagine, some bit of caution in proceeding with bringing somebody on, taking them away from a different job and potentially having to lay that person off. So I think that's caused some of the delay in terms of... but it's my understanding that departments are looking to fill all of those positions.
Thank you. This is a chart. I don't remember where I got that. It's from one of the note I had. So it's, I think our budget book used to have a historical staffing chart. That was really helpful. I hope that's kept. This is from, I don't know where.
Budget at a glance.
Oh, budget at a glance. Okay, yeah, that's right. And so 220 was from the fiscal year '23. And now we are cutting it to 207, which is still more than the year before. But look at the trend. We, the number of full-time employee actually increased quite a lot from 169 in 2014 and 192 is in 2018. And 196 to 2019. So even with the reduction, we are still a lot more FTEs than when we had a healthy revenue. So because even in, I think our sales tax in 2020 was still the previous higher level. We had 197. So even with the reduction, it seems we are still overstaffed?
I wouldn't say overstaffed. I think the services being offered have increased in some instances. For example, sustainability department, a more robust IT department, different services being offered. And so I think when you saw the increase.
But we have reduced hours in Queensland Centre, and we have reduced a lot of service hours.
We have, but there's still, you know, major events that happened in the city, or at least for our Parks and Rec Department put on programs. We have great, our fields look great compared to other cities. Our trees are well-maintained. So I think it's some of those services.
They have been great. So if we, so can I find out in Open Gov, the departmental historical chart?
You can, but we started adding that data, I want to say, either '22, '23 or '20. So we'll only be able to see up to that point. And it gives it to you by position. Otherwise, it'd be going through the budget documents and kind of doing a comparison.
Yeah, I do think we need to take a look at where we are. I think that our population is now down to 60,000, actually. So we, maybe some area we need them, but then maybe we can revisit some of them. Yeah, thank you. I think we can go to public comment now.
Mayor, I have two requests to speak from members of the public, Jean Bedord and San Ar. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, council. It is a quiet council chamber. My name is Jean Bedord, and I am a longtime Cupertino resident. I'm here to commend staff for excellent results presented in this mid-year financial report. Now, previously, staff had predicted a shortfall of roughly 10.1 million going into fiscal year '24, '25, and a continued structural deficit. Well, thanks to the actions of our capable city manager and our staff, as well as the difficult reductions authorized by council last year, the updated forecast now shows structurally sound budgets. This positive result came about as a result of changes in revenues and expenditures, generally staff reductions. What's even more encouraging is that the current forecast is conservative with regard to increased property tax revenues from new developments, which should be expected to pick up as the housing element sites are developed and when VAALCO is finally built. Property tax is about 40% of the revenue to the city. So all of those building permits will generate more money for the city. On a different note, there's been a lot of talk about the loss of sales tax in the city. Sales tax is about 14% of the city's revenue. And my understanding is that most of that is business-to-business, not consumer. I was very surprised by the recent informational memo, which found that the three SB 330 projects, which would reduce retail in the city, would only contribute about 37,000 in tax revenue. This is not significant to city finances. So clearly, the arguments for retail space need to be focused on quality of life, not revenue to the city. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jean. And San Ar is requesting to speak virtually. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. Firstly, I want to thank Director Al Faro and her team. They did a magnificent job last year. And I know that they lost critical resources. And so to be able to come back and give this update is really commendable. And I want to actually make a shout-out to ensure that we have staffing in this critical area because we'd hate to see people burnt out because of lack of sufficient staffing and see more attrition in this area. We should be redirecting priorities for hiring from an assistant city manager to critical community-facing and fiscal functions such as the budget and finance areas and maintenance workers that are community-facing. I would hope that council take that into account as you look at this assistant city manager that's sitting open up there. Secondly, I want to point out there's a lot of back patting that's going on amongst folks that frankly are sitting on 30-year cost basis of properties that they don't pay the same property tax as the rest of Cupertino residents that moved here 10 or 15 years ago. And so we live in two auto universes where there's a 15-year new population or cohort in Cupertino that is suffering the burden of taxes, where a population that is older, has been here 30 years or more, does not understand the pain of new residents to Cupertino. And so I urge you to look at this not as good news that we're doing really well, but that the pains on new residents continue to rise while we continue to spend and spend and spend without taking deep cuts. And so I urge you to please not consider any increase in taxes. I hear some commentary about 2026 and 2030. You can be assured that we will, as a resident community, galvanize against any candidates that run in 2026 or 2030 that stand for tax increases and any measures that attempt to increase taxes. CUSD has already seen that in this community multiple times, and we will be happy to show that to Cupertino as well to make sure that you understand we are overtaxed and overburdened with property taxes. We cannot afford to continue to see tax hikes as the path and solution. I would urge you to cut deep on consultants and CIP. And particularly in CIP, where projects can be, the CIP budget is over 45 million. And so for today, I would, on the recommended action, I would actually request city to not transfer to capital reserve and instead cut a project to bring the capital reserve to policy levels. Please do not make the transfer. Please amend the motion to reject the transfer and cut spending in CIP instead. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Mayor, no additional requests to speak.
Thank you. So maybe we can entertain a motion first? Anyone would like? So, Councilmember Mohan.
I will approve the recommended action to accept the city manager's mid-year financial report for fiscal year '24, '25.
Second?
And the second resolution.
And the second. And adopt the resolution number 25-018, approving budget modification number 2425-383, increasing appropriations by $4,161,892 and revenues by $4,115,183.
Likewise, seconded.
Any comments? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So my question is with regards to that Attachment G. We have items that did not have funding when they were mentioned previously. And I'm wondering if there is some assumption that the amended budget shown in Attachment G is somehow being approved by the overall action? For instance, does approving this item mean that the $500,000 listed as business continuity resilience, staff is considering making improvements to the EOC later this fiscal year? This seems to, the approval of this resolution appears to be approving an action, which is a work program item. Is that, is that understanding correct? So it's PDF page 188.
I would point back to the recommendations. So the resolution is specific to approving the budget modification. And in the resolution, there's a chart that outlines the, by fund, the $4,161 in appropriations and $4,115 in revenue. That is specifically what we're asking you to approve as we showed on those two tables. So this is meant for information, Attachment G is meant for informational purposes only.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? So I'd like to thank the staff for a great report and also appreciate the inclusion of capital improvement program status update. I wish there could be a work program status update so that in the quarterly report, we get a quarterly update together. But, and also I appreciate the grant tracking chart that has, all this grant that we are applying. And, oh, plus the capital improvement program project also included a list of unfunded project. I think it's good to have that view. So thank you for providing all the information. And I do hope that we, next time, we'll have more clear picture on special projects. So if no more comments, let's vote.
The motion carries with Wong voting no.
Okay, now we would go into item nine. Amendments to the Cupertino City Council Procedures Manual, continued from February 19th meeting. I do believe we have amended the staff report. So, yeah.
And we have a short presentation.
Okay.
It's basically the presentation that would have been presented on February 19th. In 2023, council adopted the council procedures manual. In March of 2024, the manual was updated with minor amendments. And then on February 4th, there was a study session before this council to consider further amendments. Based upon that study session, the former city attorney prepared a red line document integrating what he believed to be the recommendation of the city council. And that is the red line that we have today with further, with one further amendment. The one further amendment is adding a section regarding texting while on the dais. It reads, "During public meetings, council members shall not text or otherwise communicate privately with any public official as defined in the city's Code of Ethics for Conduct for elected and appointed officials or with members of the public regarding matters relevant to items on the agenda while on the dais." Additionally, on page two, a portion of the final sentence of section 2.2 had been omitted from the red line last time. So we just added what was meant to be included at that time. So that is what we have presented today. And I will hand it to the mayor to take it from here. But I would also note that recently, the mayor identified a change to section 8.5. I think she believes that section 8.5, the former city attorney, got incorrect. And so I think she's suggesting that we correct that to reflect what actually happened at that original meeting on February 4th, if that makes sense. So I'll hand that.
Thank you. Yeah. There is actually a few places that's different from the council adopted motion. So I will go through them. Yeah, I think I will go through. But do we do public comment? Maybe we should do public comments first. And then I, and then I'll go through the differences. Yeah. Okay. I think we probably don't need questions because this is second time we are doing this. Let's just go directly to public comment.
Yes, Mayor, I have two requests to speak for members of the public, Jean Bedord and San Ar. Welcome, Jean.
Is it, okay, is it now on?
Yes.
Okay. Once again, good evening, council members and staff. My name is Jean Bedord, and I am a longtime Cupertino resident. Tonight, I am here to oppose some of these changes. I am particularly disturbed by the supplemental staff report. First of all, this change was not included in the original proposal presented to the entire council. It surfaced only yesterday, prior to another city council meeting. This language was added, and I quote, "After a conversation with the mayor regarding texting and other private communication while on the dais, the public and council members were given insufficient time to consider the implications. The city manager and deputy city manager did not sign the supplemental staff report, the usual protocol. Let me remind the new city attorney that she works for the entire council, not just the mayor, as well as staff. Secondly, the language hastily added to the procedure manual was not cited in the supplemental report, but buried in the red line version. Let me read. During public meetings, council members shall not text or otherwise communicate privately with any public official as defined in the city's Code of Ethics for Conduct for elected and appointed officials or with members of the public regarding matters relevant to items on the agenda while on the dais. City staff shall observe the same rule. Now, how will this be managed? What about emergencies? Councilmember Wong's connection to India went down during the last council meeting. How was he supposed to communicate? Mayor Chow was on Zoom last week. She was witness communicating on her phone during the council meeting. Who will be responsible for enforcement? Is this going to be like a classroom where phones are confiscated before going on the dais? How can it be enforced on Zoom? What happens when the technology goes down? The staff needs to respond. Clearly, the implications have not been considered. Please reject this change. It has been a poor process. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jean. And San Ar is requesting to speak virtually. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. Firstly, I want to welcome the new city attorney and anchor for admirably taking this on in the midst of staffing change that ideally would have completed this item before the change in staffing. So welcome and congratulations on this first, on this first report. I wholeheartedly endorse these changes. And moreover, the residents of Cupertino voted for change. And a big part of that were these changes. Residents saw what was going on. Residents saw what was going on, and you have heard residents coming into these oral comment sections and public comment sections in large numbers that we never witnessed before 2022 and after the era of Walco. And so, 2023, 2024, we have seen a resurgence of public engagement. And that has reflected in the public being aware of what is going on in the last two years. And the election was a clear mandate for change. And what this agenda item does is restore community engagement and transparency such that residents can participate in the process in ways that they were being cut out before. Specifically, removing written communications that have been sent in by residents for oral comments or oral communications, limiting the amount of time arbitrarily, forcing oral comments at the end of the meeting, requiring groups of five people to yield time, requiring reasons to be provided to council members to pull consent calendar items. A number of these changes have a common theme, which is that the residents don't matter. And this has got to change. We voted for this change, and this agenda item is a reflection of the change in council on dais. If, if we have council members on dais that believe this change is not necessary, please read the room and read the mandate that you got in the last election, and we will see more of that in 2026. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Mayor, no, there are no additional requests to speak for this item.
Thank you. So, I'm sharing the screen now. This is the section that was added regarding texting. So, I didn't include this part in my proposal last time, even though quite a few, I think multiple members of the public was very insisted on no texting during council meeting because they have observed, may suspected, I guess, texting between council member and audience. And so, I approached the city attorney to suggest a potential language for that. But specifically, I want to be sure that council members would be able to text their family members for any emergency and any logistics in terms of how the city runs, the Zoom is out, that should be allowed. And the, the language here is very clear. You say that it's only for regarding matters relevant to items on the agenda. You shouldn't be texting about that because any messaging about an agenda item should be part of the public meeting. It shouldn't happen in a different channel. And, but anything beyond that, you, that's not part of the meeting. So, then you, especially when it's logistics, in case city manager need to contact her staff for, for meeting logistics, maybe need to invite police for anything, of course, that would be allowed, okay? So, that's all. I think this is the language there that, so thank you, city attorney, for suggesting the language. And I think it's up to the council to approve, of course. And then, there are some items that we adopted from the last meeting with the motion. The, when city attorney modified in the red line version, did not completely comply with the motion. So, some of those, I agree with some, I think I would like to revert. So, this one is regarding the council, council member report. The city attorney, the former city attorney changed that to mean the council member report should only include matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. My original language was may include other matters serving the constituents. Because we, for example, Lehigh issue. Lehigh is not within the jurisdiction of the city, but it's something that would affect Cupertino. If there is legislation at the state level or any policy at the county level that would affect Cupertino, then that might be matter. Council members want to communicate with the community to serve our constituents. So, I would like to still use my original language for this. And then, the next one is.
Pardon, pardon, Mayor. Could you please go back to the prior item? I'm trying to locate that within the packet.
Oh. So, this was 8.3, Order of Business. This was, so this slide was the one from the motion on, on the 4th of February.
Pardon also, so are you saying that what we have redlined is correct now, or?
No, the red line is not. So, my original motion was other matters serving the constituents. And the red line version is, says other information relevant to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council.
Okay, thank you.
So, I want to change it back to the, what I originally proposed, okay? And then, this part is pointed out by a community member that, okay. Here is, so this was from the motion. All I had changed was, it was at the second regular meeting in January, we should adopt the, the meeting calendar. I, all I changed was prior to the second regular meeting, we should adopt a calendar of the year. But the city attorney, former city attorney, removed the entire paragraph. So, it is unclear when the meeting calendar will be adopted. So, I would like to keep the previous one that still says prior to the second regular meeting in January. Okay? And then, this one is, I think this one, we did not include in the motion. But council member Wong, at the time, had a friendly amendment saying he would like to reconsider that. So, I would like to know whether we should allow anyone to pull or maybe we should allow any council member to pull, public can suggest, and maybe a council member can agree. So, maybe we keep that, but then we just say allow a member by a member of the city council. That's a compromise.
Through the mayor, I'm fine with it.
You're fine with that, okay? So, strike through, yeah. And also, I think I mentioned last time, I pulled other cities, Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, Fremont. I think Los Altos all allow any member of the public to pull an item of consent. So, so now, the language would be items may be removed from the consent calendar by a member of the city council. To facilitate an efficient meeting, advance notice to city manager and the city clerk by noon is still appreciated or encouraged. Okay? So, we are keeping the current practice as best practice, but in turn, in case anyone need to pull it at the meeting, we can still do that. And then, the next one is, this one is, is an additional item, but relevant, so I'm including it here. I borrowed that from the Los Altos council norms. It's clarifying that even when a consent item is not pulled, the council is able to ask a clarifying question or make a comment, or make a brief comment. I think we were not clear about that. A lot of times, we pull an item just to ask a question. So, this would prevent us from having to pull. Yeah, so that's, I thought it would be helpful. Next thing is also, this one is from the last meeting, the, from the February 4th. My original language is two, it should be two or up to five members. And then, the former city attorney changed, removed the up to five, but kept the two or more. I thought it's important to say two or up to five. The reason is, in case we shorten the time to one minute, I don't want to have 10 people who combine their time to 10 minutes. So, it's two up to five people who can cover, combine their time. Yeah, Vice Mayor.
Wrong light. So, how would this address? Like, for instance, yesterday, we had a number of groups speaking on the same topic. Are you saying a speaker representing five members of the public can, can comment? But what if you had, you know, 10, 15, 20 people who didn't want to bog down the entire council meeting by having multiple? It looks like you're having groups of five. Can they combine? I mean.
They can come by up to 10. So, even if they have more people, it's up to 10. Or they have, they can break up their groups.
Well, okay, so what happens when they, when they're breaking up their groups? What we've noticed is that you, you're ending up with one representative basically saying the same thing as, as all the others, and if.
We can control that, I guess.
Well, can, can you?
This was the original language. Oh, I, I think the proposal last time was just to clarify when they combine. They can combine two minutes per member. That was, and then up to five. But, of course, they can gain the system, they can, they can have two groups. Yeah, okay. So, these are the up, are changes that's a little different from the adopted motion. So, I would like to first make a motion to adopt the red line version that's on the, in the agenda packet plus the modifications that I have shared so far. So, I'm making a motion to adopt the red line version, which include the texting language. And then, the, this part about reverting to the language from the motion, other matters serving the constituent. And this part to ensure we adopt the meeting prior to the second regular meeting. And then, this part that we allow a council member to pull. But still encourage, appreciate earlier notification to the staff. And then, clarify, council can ask question and make brief comment. And then, restore two or up to five members. That's all. That's part of the motion.
More, second?
Thank you. Any comment? Councilmember Flan.
So, I mean.
And then, councilmember Mohan.
Been generally given very little opportunity to even weigh in on the topic, but I do want to get some clarity from the city attorney on 8.7.1 because it's not clear to me how this would be enforced. If someone were to suspect a council member of texting on the dais, are we expected to turn over our phone to somebody, to the whole council to evaluate? How would this be, how would this function?
I think it would really be up to the council members to comply. I, I don't expect there would be a time when enforcement action would take place.
Why, why would you think that?
Out of, you know, honor and consideration for the rules.
Yeah, I'm, I would not be quite so ready to accept that that would be something that would happen here, given the history of this council. I, I just think that this is, I understand the ill that it is attempting to cure, especially since I have seen some of these things myself. But this seems like a profoundly infantilizing rule. I'm surprised that it's here at all. I do have a question as well about 5.3, which is a requirement to inform alternates about various materials for regional bodies that we may be assigned to. Who is responsible for that?
I think it would be up to the council member who received the materials.
Okay, so the council member who gets it in the first instance. What if you don't have any kind of, you know, idea that you're going to have to miss it until the last second?
So, actually, some of the regional bodies already have the practice that they, they include the alternate in all the.
Sure, some do, not all of them.
Some doesn't, then we can then inform them, this is our policy. We would like them to include the alternate.
And what if they're not?
If they do not, then we will. I think most likely, they will comply, yeah.
All right, again, I think that's wishful thinking. I'd like to ask also a question about 4.5, which is the removal of commissioners for failing to file their, you know, Form 700 Conflict of Interest disclosures. If we're supposed to be prizing transparency, I'm not sure why we would now make this something that is discretionary for us. I mean, the reason that this rule exists is because we had a commissioner who never filed a disclosure form for over a year.
The reason is, I think commissioners are appointed by the council. So, I think the removal should be by the council, at the discretion of the council, so.
I mean, we already have a rule that says that they would be removed if they're absent too often. So, why wouldn't we just continue that for the same sort of ministerial application that we would have here? I understand wanting to be able to remove people on a political basis or because you don't like their performance or something like that, but these are things that are just necessary.
Then, the council will decide to remove, yeah. But I think it's, it should be a decision of the council.
So, you want to have to embarrass that person here in public?
How do other people think about this? My original intention is, I think, an action done by the council should be undone by the council also. It does not make sense for a staff person to undo an action done by the council. What do other people think about that? But I, it's true that we don't want to embarrass a person by removing them. But by the city clerk removing them without a council action, does that make sense?
It's, it's been our practice for a long time with absences. So, I don't, I don't, I don't get this at all.
They do have a chance to appeal, but maybe when they appeal, it comes to the council. I'm open to suggestion.
That's the current practice.
So, Vice Mayor, and then, councilmember Mohan.
Thank you. I, I seem to recall two hours' worth of public shaming and humiliation from prior city council. So, it was actually their practice to do exactly that. So, it has happened. And perhaps, we look at policy towards removing of commissioners and how that would be conducted to make sure that that doesn't happen again.
So, councilmember Mohan.
So, my thinking on this is that there are objective standards for commissioners, attendance, Form 700 and so on. And it's much more, attendance, and did I say that? Yes, attendance. So, it's, it's much more efficient when the city clerk talks to the commission members with, with the intention of removing the commission members when these objective standards are not met. I mean, I think it's, it could be a waste of time for this to be deliberated by council when these are objective standards. I understand if there's something, if the commissioner wants to appeal, we, we can deal with it. But there are some very routine stand, standards that we've laid out. In fact, we had one, and Madam City Clerk. In fact, we had one, and Madam City Clerk, you may, you may remember, there was someone with the uh, who had a problem with the way the commission was being conducted, and for the most part, the city clerk uh, dealt and discussed, and and it was amicably resolved without anything. So just having some, something like that come back to the council would be a waste of time. I understand if there's a a subjective uh, standard, or if there's a something discretionary or or something.
Councilmember Wong and Vice Mayor. Do we need to vote to choose extend the meeting?
We will if we're going to reach 11 o'clock.
Let's hopefully get up before 11. I think my, I think there are two points I have here. It's great how it was done in the past is, you know, always a a good indicator of history and tradition, but sometimes it doesn't make logical sense. If you appoint someone, you should remove them. If the body that appoints someone should be the body that removes them, that's a consistent thing across most bodies. So you could make a decision to do an exception, but in general, that's typically how you would want to have that level of consistency.
Yeah.
As for the other stuff, I'll plead the fifth.
Okay, so, and why don't we try to try it out and see if it if it doesn't work, we can always adjust in six months. So could we vote on this motion?
Madam Mayor, can I?
I'd like to vote. Do you have more comments?
On this one item?
Yeah, no, on the.
On the whole.
The motion. The motion.
I I had, can I? Okay, I'm ask, I'm asking the mayor if I could discuss.
Point of order, the question was called.
Yeah, that's true.
Moved over, rule the chair.
Okay, so what does that mean?
Uh, is there a second to overrule the chair?
Can I second?
You can.
Yes, I will second.
And did you second?
I am overruling.
So the chair has called the question.
Yeah.
And so now it's time for a vote.
Yeah.
And the councilman um, now has moved to overrule the chair, which he is is in line to do, that's proper order. He needs a second. If there's a second, there'll be a vote. If the vote passes, then the chair will be overruled, and the um, uh, last motion will not be forced to be voted on, and further debate can take place. If it doesn't pass, then we will vote on the motion that's on the floor right now.
Okay, I I will second uh, Councilmember Fruen's motion.
So now we must vote on that.
We'll vote on that motion.
Or there could be discussion before we vote on that.
It's a privileged motion.
Oh, thank you.
No discussion, so vote.
So we're voting on the the motion to overrule the chair.
Mm-hmm.
And I need to check Robert's rules to see if this needs uh, four votes.
Point of order, we operate under a modified version of Rosenberg's.
Rosenberg.
I'm sorry, uh. No, I said Rosenberg's. He says we're, oh, I'm sorry, I'm I'm checking Rosenberg's rules, thank you.
Madam City Attorney, I believe vote on ruling by the chair requires an a simple majority.
Thank you.
The motion carries with.
Motion doesn't.
The motion fails with Mohan and Fruen voting yes.
Hmm, okay. I I know that you submitted the written communication yesterday, I read through them.
Right, okay. It wasn't yesterday, it was before, uh, before the last.
Well, so now, um, we just voted to not overrule the chair, which means the prior motion has now been called, and it's time to vote on the prior motion.
Okay.
No discussion.
Okay, no discussion. So we vote.
Yeah, we should vote.
The the motion to call the question uh, carries with Mohan and Fruen voting. Oh, actually, I believe it fails because you need a three, three-fourths. Oh, okay. This is the actual motion, okay. This is the actual motion, okay. So it carries with Mohan and Fruen voting no.
Okay. Thank you. And now I have some additional changes that I'm proposing. I find out that I, yeah.
Point of order, we move on to the next item? We've, we have voted on the item, the item's completed, is that correct?
I hope to propose additional changes that I hope for the council to consider.
City Attorney?
Well, the subject is amendments to the city council procedures, um, and it was continued from February 19th. The subject is amendments to Cupertino city council procedures, so I do not believe that is necessarily limited to only the procedures in the red line.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I I find that it's difficult as a mayor to set agenda when I don't know what's going on, going to be on even the next council agenda, March 18th, for example. I would not be able to even see a draft agenda until the 10th. That's about eight days or two days before the agenda is to be published. And this, then I find, looked at best practices that's available. So I see in Sunnyvale, they post a 12-month tentative council meeting agenda. And then, so this is an example of what they post for each meeting, they have some items that's tentatively going to come in a certain meeting, and they have multiple report in council agenda. One of them is the tentative council meeting agenda calendar. And in Las Altos, they have a similar policy, oh, sorry, they post almost also one year of calendar, and each one, they have agenda item, when it was proposed, and then whether the category of that item, and which department head is responsible for the item. And then I looked at Cupertino's past practice. We in fact have future agenda items posted in this bi-weekly city manager newsletter coded items of interest back in 2019. At the time, almost three months, six meetings look ahead, we have. Um, so we know what's upcoming. This is published in items of interest that's accessible to any member of the public. And then in August, I see that there is two months look ahead, and then I find out that it becomes one and a half months look ahead. And then in October 2022, it's still published, but there is a one month look ahead. So I would like us to adopt the policy to include that practice. And here are some additional proposal. So I label this L2 dash one, this is the second set of recommendation. Uh, one is when, when an alternate even cannot attend a meeting, um, the mayor can designate a temporary alternate to attend a regional body meeting. And I'll just go through them, and then if you have objection, I'm open to um, any comments. And then the city council shall rat, ratify any appointment made by outside bodies. This is borrowed from the Sunnyvale council procedure. Therefore, appointments made by outside bodies, for example, Cities Association or League of California Cities, the city council must ratify the appointment of a council member as part of a notice agenda item at the regular meeting. And next one is, um, this is actually from Councilmember Fruen's comment in the, on February 4th. He suggested that when info request might require significant load, that could be added to the future agenda list. So I think that's a good idea. So it, it, so the to be the list could include a future agenda item and also info memo list. So this is where I have added, so I inserted here, um, so here's the suggestion is, city manager shall place request to impose a significant workload on council agenda under the future items item for review by the, for council. And under that, we have the list of future agenda item and the info request. Then, and then this one is relevant to that info memo request is a part of the future agenda request list. So it's just adding this to be consistent with the last one. And this is about the tentative council agenda calendar, this is borrowed from the language of, I think it's Las Altos. So the tentative council meeting agenda calendar shall list items pending to come before the council within the next 12-month period, and shall be included in each council members agenda, each council meeting's agenda packet under the future agenda items item. The tentative agenda calendar show, hmm, that shouldn't be a period, should include agenda item level detail for the next three months with dates requested by council agenda category, such as consent, discussion item, public hearing, and department heads assigned to the agenda item. So this is, I'm proposing, and um, this is relevant to that, but I would like the same best practice as applicable for all the commission and committee meetings to also have the future agenda items on the agenda that include the proposed future agenda items and a tentative 12-month meeting calendar. This also allows the council to know what's upcoming in each commission, since they are serving the council, because otherwise, we also don't know what's upcoming for each agenda, each commission. And then this part is actually according to uh, Councilmember Mohan's comment from written communication. That's in the supplemental report from March 3rd. Um, I think we had a policy that council members should report trip expenses in the council when it's funded by the city, that's a city policy, but it has never been implemented. So Councilmember Mohan suggested maybe that could just be part of the council report. I thought that's a good idea, so I added a subitem under that, under reimbursement part, which talks about when we would receive reimbursement. So the additional item reads, um, council members shall report any conferences or travel expenses funded by the city in the council activity report, as stated in the elected officials compensation program policy number three, Exhibit A. And that's all. That's what I'm proposing to add to the procedures menu. Any comment? So let's have um, two minutes each. Councilmember Mohan.
If, if I could go back to the previous discussion, or is that okay? I did turn in a, a list of items that I felt needed to be discussed, and um, from the motion that we all, that was approved by the majority of the council, I, I had, I didn't feel that my concerns were heard, which is disappointing, because, you know, Mayor, you put in a lot of work into redoing some of the um, the policies and procedures on this, and and I did my part, but I never really got an occasion to discuss it with any member of the council. So I'm a little disappointed that for a council who talks about transparency and communication, I am not being given the opportunity to go down my list of things that I'm, that I don't agree with. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I noticed it's two minutes till 11. To continue past 11, we need a vote of the council to do so.
Okay. So I'll make the motion to continue the meeting to 11:30?
I'll second, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Vice Mayor, more, more and Councilmember.
Thank you, um, so the, these are.
Do you want to take a vote, Mayor? Sorry to interrupt you, Vice Mayor.
Discussion on the vote or something like that?
Uh, right now, I don't support it.
Yeah, at this moment, it's time for discussion on the vote, and if there is no discussion, then you could take the vote.
Yeah. So if we, if we don't extend it, this item is going to be continued to the next meeting.
Correct.
That's my preference, thank you.
So you want to continue this again?
I I I'm okay with, I mean, not doing this and extending it, so maybe we can get to Council, Councilmember Mohan's other concerns, because then you can actually do that in a separate piece, but if we're trying to pass these things right now, then I would extend it, so. And we got sister cities, too.
A point of order, I don't think that at this point, now that we've voted on the last motion and the amendments, that Councilmember Mohan's um, comments will be able to change anything that's already been voted on, although that doesn't mean that the council member couldn't share her comments, but I just, you want to point that out.
Pardon, through the mayor, so we do have an edited version that we've agreed to at this point.
Yes.
At this point, what I'll do before the next time this comes back is um, confirm that the red line that we currently have that was just approved is clear, is clear, and that will be included, and, but at this moment, it's 11 o'clock, and so we need to either vote to extend, or we should adjourn. And it's been moved and seconded, it's time for a vote.
Okay. So let's, yeah, I I would prefer that's, that's get through this, so that we can implement the procedures menu um, as soon as possible, this has been delayed, delayed again. So if we can just take another 15 minutes to go, to go through the votes. Are you okay with 11:15?
Through the mayor, it would have been my preference that your additional changes would have been presented to us, and I.
I submitted that in written communication before the meeting.
Uh, today?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're expecting all of the supplemental materials with regards to the Q, the mid-year update that were requested and came out this afternoon, would be read on top of your additional edits? So I'm sorry, I can't support that. I need more time to concentrate on what your changes are. I can't just rubber stamp them, which is what I feel like I'm being asked to do. Thank you.
Okay. So are you okay with implementing?
We really should take the vote?
Take the vote.
Okay. So can I modify substantive motion to 11:15? Do you consider that?
Is there a second?
To continue to 11:15?
I think the substantive motion fails for lack of a second. So we'll revert to the first motion, which is to.
Okay.
Um, while we're looking to vote on what, to extend the meeting.
To 11:30.
To 11:30.
To 11:30, that's for sure.
Uh, actually, I specifically emailed the changes to you yesterday.
Yeah.
Anyway.
It's time to, I think it's time to vote.
Let's vote.
So what are we voting on?
Uh, we're voting on.
We'll state 11:30.
Continue to 11:30.
Correct.
Sorry, go ahead.
We're voting on the motion to continue the meeting until 11:30.
Okay.
The motion carries with Mohan and Fruen voting no.
Okay. Which means we're going to continue the meeting until 11:30, and so we can continue to review the items that the mayor has presented?
I'd like to make a suggestion that since we, I'd like to make a suggestion that since we've already passed the pieces that you want today, um, let's take some time and look at the other ones that you have in the future in another meeting. We have sister cities that we start to get through, and if you can do that, then at least we can complete the agenda. And if you can do that, then at least we can complete the agenda and come back to the things that you're interested in.
Okay, so then we need to vote to, um, to do the sister city item, because it's-
Yeah, go to the next agenda item, you can. You can do that.
Do we need to vote to?
To continue the item?
To, okay, so we will continue this item to the next meeting? And then we will start the sister city policy one.
I, I believe what we're trying to do here, uh, through the mayor, is, is you want to be able to, uh, we have passed a lot of this procedures manual that you want at this moment. You might want to leave that on the agenda for the next meeting, for the changes that you want.
Yeah.
And you can do that with mayor's prerogative, and then in the next piece, uh, let's move on to the next agenda item and go to sister cities presentation.
Uh, Vice Mayor, thank you for continuing the meeting. I would like to hear what's your preference.
Uh, no comment.
Okay, then I'll take council member Wong's advice. We continue this item and go to the sister city policy. So for the sister city policy, there were concerns last year because it wasn't clear.
Question is, do we need a vote to, a question to the city attorney, do we need a vote to continue the item to the next meeting?
Uh, I think we should continue the item. I think we should vote to continue the item.
Okay, let's do it.
Oh, as vote to continue the press council procedures menu to the next meeting, right?
The additional items, not the pieces that were passed?
Oh, okay. So are you making the motion?
I will make a motion that we take, uh, we continue the item for the additional items that are to be considered at another meeting date, hopefully to the next meeting agenda.
Yeah.
Moore, second.
Okay. Let's vote.
The motion carries with Mohan and Frohman voting no.
And then we go to item 10. So I spoke to each of the sister city chair to get their feedback. And, but the main reason that I, I had concerns starting from last October and recently learned of another invitation for a city staff to go to a friendship city visit delegation. And so I'd like to clarify what is the policy, because last year, a city staff went on, a city paid international delegation trip without council approval. And I have not been able to clarify the policy. So what you see here is the current policy. For international delegation, it states international travel shall be at the expense of the traveling council member or any accompanying staff member unless authorized in advance by the city council. Um, but last year, there was, um, travel to an international delegation to India when the airfare and the hotel were both funded by the city and without prior approval. So I would like to amend this language to make it more clear. This is a proposed revised policy. The underlined are the additions. So when the authorization is not obtained prior to the international trip, the city shall not fund any expenses by traveling council member or any accompanying staff member. It seems redundant, but it seems necessary. And the second paragraph is any accompanying staff member shall not join the delegation in their official capacity as city staff during the trip unless the city council has granted prior authorization, including a statement outlining the specific city business that necessitates the staff members' presence in the foreign country. Any staff member traveling in an official capacity shall submit a report to the city council detailing the city business conducted overseas. Um, since if a city staff travel in official capacity for 10 days in a foreign country, I think the council has, there has to be official business authorized by the council to conduct in that country, and there should be a report on how that serve the business of Cupertino. And also another thing that I have observed in the last two years is whenever there is delegation visits either from Friendship City or any other city, sometimes there are one, sometimes up to three city staff will be present for this kind of delegation visits. But before, prior to 2022, any such international delegation visits usually is received by a council member. And the city staff usually just help prepare the gifts. So I'd like to clarify that the city intends to provide limited financial and staffing support for international delegation, enabling city staff to focus on official city business. And an information brochure about Cupertino, including its population, financial status and business, business landscape, scap, scap may be provided to delegation members. In the past, from 2019 to 2022, when there is a delegation visit, the economic development manager has prepared, um, two sheets, I think Cupertino profile information that we have been giving out. But then in the past year, it seems to be the city manager is giving an oral presentation to an international delegation. That probably is the same for every delegation. I thought that's probably not the best use of the city staff time. Um, I think the information brochure will be sufficient. Um, of course, if an international delegation is from a sister city where um, they're, they have executive level staffing that's a company, the city could provide a comparable representation. And here is in the policy that's regarding limited financial and limited, the current language says limited financial support. I would like to clarify that also include limited staffing support, because staffing time is precious. Um, I think, um, the sister city hmm, committee people, they, they understood that they, and one of them has told me, she was surprised when they had three student delegate, a delegation with five student members. And there were three city staff receiving that five-member delegation. They were surprised at the amount of city staff support. So I think they told me in the past that that wasn't the case also, so. And then here is the reporting requirement. Currently, city sister city committee that has student delegation, which means receive city financial support, is required to provide, um, some report. So I'd like to add that reports should include the student exchange program, its recruitment, recruitment process, and the number of students served to get more clarity. And the next part is about sister city committee that does not have student delegation. In the terminology used in our policy, it means it's not receiving city financial support. So it's, um, I think they should also provide a report about their, about their activity, because they do receive room or um, this is a request by the Uber Nasha sister city, because they request that in case they don't have student exchange program, in case they, because right now, if a sister city committee doesn't have student exchange program, not only they don't get any financial support, they also don't have, um, the use of large capacity, large meeting room, although they, um, they do get the four meeting room use for smaller rooms. So I'm suggesting when they don't have, because I think different sister city have different needs. Some of them focus, like Shinju, Shinju sister city program, they only do student exchange, do it very well, but they don't, they don't do a lot of other events. But Uber Nasha sister city, they want to focus more on hosting different culture exchange events. So they would like to have the support of maybe have two large community events in city facility. So this is what I'm proposing based on their input. And Toyokawa told me the current language is, there is a rotation of delegation based on the number of sister cities. So if we have four sister cities, that means there is one, this, this is talking about delegation from Cupertino to another country. Right now, it's every four years because we have four sister city. But for Toyokawa, they are on a five-year rotation based on their agreement with Toyokawa. So I just want to clarify, for them, the schedule is different. Their concern is in case we have two more sister cities, then it's on a six-year rotation, but they need a five-year rotation, then the one rotation might not be supported by the city. So this, uh, the proposal, if we want to continue the item to, for people to think about and discuss next time, um, that's fine, or if you are okay with approving today. Um, council member Mohan.
We, we probably should get public comment.
Oh, right. Sorry, public comment, yeah. Um, sorry, I forgot about public comment.
Yes, Mayor, I see one hand raised virtually from San R. Welcome, Sam.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. As many of you know, um, I've been a host for a week for the Sinchu sister city delegation, and I was also a chaperone and a volunteer driver to the week for the Sinchu sister city delegation. I've also had my, uh, my, my daughter be a part of the outbound sister city delegation to Sinchu. And it really is a, is a well-intentioned, well-meant program for student exchange, one that creates lifelong memories for students that unfortunately, in the last two years, seems to have taken a twist and turn into becoming an economic development agenda involving city staff and, um, and, and other engagements. Uh, as I understand it, that was not a precedent that existed prior to 2023. And so I am supportive of the changes to not implicitly allow for staff to be traveling on these sister city delegations. It is frankly a student delegation that is, uh, that is really the focus of this. And if there needs to be additional throw of leadership from the city, because that can be understandable in some of the other receiving delegations may have larger contingents, then I, I urge you to have either the second council member or a parent delegate, or preferably maybe a second council member be a part of that. Because that way, it is the elected representatives for the taxpayers that are actually part of the delegation, not paid staff. Further, as a parent, I funded my daughter's trip to Sinchu. And so it really pains me to see that my taxpayer dollars is going to fund staff travel to sister city when I had to fund it for my, for my child. So I urge you to not support the city paying for these kinds of trips. It has to be self-funded by any outbound delegation. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam, and we have Gilbert Wong requesting to speak. Welcome, Gilbert.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Gilbert Wong, former Cupertino mayor, and representing myself. I have been active with all four sister cities, and I believe that the sister city's intent is mainly cultural and educational. So I just want to point out very clearly, again, I'm here representing myself. What I hear today, looking on this, on the staff, and especially a question to the city attorney, is that when there's information that is presented today, which has no 72 hours notice on the Brown Act, uh, well, this is a study session, but it's very important to ask Vice Mayor Kitty Morris to that, when you give information within the 24 hours and the public doesn't have proper notice, my concern is that to make sure that there's proper notification in general. Um, looking at the staff report, I see the staff report is mainly agendized on one person, which is our wonderful staff. And I believe that it's very important that, as the mayor said in the wonderful state of city address, is that you're a representative for the city of all people. And I see this focusing on just one person, our wonderful city manager. And if you don't want our city manager to go, just say that. You have a majority on city council. You make it very personalized. And I think that there's a part of the community that loves our city manager. And I think that we don't show her the respect that we needed. Do you really want to change a city policy that, like Stan Row was saying, that even my daughter went both to Toyokawa, both to Shinju? And do we want to play politics on our sister city programs or our friendship city programs? So it ain't broken. We feel the love and support from all five city council members. And this is not about economic development. If you don't want city manager to do presentations, you just say, Madam City Manager, we don't want you to do presentations. But the system is not broken, and it's very, very important to continue this wonderful program. Or why would the volunteers want to participate to send our, our students overseas? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Of course, I have given my feedback to the city staff involved, and it was ignored and ignored. And then there was another chance to travel to Friendship City delegation. Therefore, I felt the need to clarify at the policy level.
No additional requests to speak from the public, Mayor.
Um, council member Mohan. I did, I would not need to do this if, um, yeah, council member Mohan.
May, may the city attorney make a, a quick response on the agenda? Um, it, although it is much better to have the materials attached 72 hours ahead of time, and it's certainly better for the city council to have the ability to digest the materials ahead of time. Um, when an item is agendized, um, that does satisfy the Brown Act. It tells the world that this is the item that we're going to be talking about. And so it's not required that the materials be provided 72 hours in advance.
Actually, I have suggested to the prior city attorney, like for the procedures menu, I would like to submit my version of the changes I would like to make. The former city attorney said there is no process to include my recommendation in the agenda. So there is no way for me to submit this to be included in the agenda. And, but I do know that some cities, he said that there, because we didn't adopt the process to allow council memo-
At this moment, I feel like we're now-
As the agenda packet.
Talking about my comment, which is not on the agenda? So I think that we should have that conversation offline.
On the way. So in, there is no other way for a council member to provide input except in the public speaker.
No, I hear, I understand what you're saying.
So you can say that because of that, I cannot propose changes, because this is the only venue I have to propose changes.
I'm not saying that.
Yeah.
I, I did not say that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't think that that's what is being said. I'm just saying now that we've had that conversation, now that I've responded to the public speaker, we should get back to the, um-
Okay, yeah. Okay, so go back to Councilmember Mohan and Councilmember Fru.
I just heard the city attorney say there was no requirement to give 72 hours notice. And, and I heard you say this is the only way that you can communicate your positions. You know, but it, it does seem unorthodox, unusual. So in this case.
Why is that?
Because we are reading it off the screen.
I am, because I, I need to make, I want to revise the policy.
I, I agree.
So there is, the only way for me to present here is I would like to revise isn't right here and now.
And so my suggestion would be for you to turn in your recommendation, but give us some time to.
So we will always have true study session for every time?
Otherwise, we would just be making decisions without deliberating on the dais.
No, study session is when we are deliberating on the dais.
So is that what we're doing now?
Yeah, this is study session.
That's what we're doing now.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's, it's a little difficult. What, what are we discussing?
There's nothing to vote on the moment, but we're discussing.
We're discussing the, the changes to the sister city's policy that the mayor has just presented.
Okay, so Councilmember Fru and then Councilmember Mo. That's each, it's 11:25. That's each take one minute.
For the record, I did not vote to extend time in this fashion, so I'm rather object to being short-changed on it. I will note that when Councilmember Mohan was mayor, when Hung Way was mayor, neither one of them ever cut you off. And I don't feel like you are according us the same courtesy. So with that said, I will note that I think that this, this entire agenda item is rather unfortunate because it seems to be aimed entirely at the city manager for no particularly good reason. And frankly, I think it's a little petty and that you should all be a little bit better than this.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Mo.
Try to stick to the agenda topic. So the item is to discuss, to consider, discuss, and provide direction on revisions to the policies and guidelines. So to me, that means that, well, first I want to state that these are a number of revisions provided by one council member. And we should be given some time to, to think about those and offer any of our own. And this appears to be mostly, if not all, directed at the sister cities, not the friendship cities. And I don't see anyone here that's actually representing a sister city. I know the mayor said that you've conversed with them, but I think that that might be helpful. I'm curious why there's no modifications to the friendship cities. Some items that I was curious about is what the actual cost has been to the city for meeting rooms, space up to 18 per calendar year. This item doesn't, this particular bullet point doesn't say what meeting room, for how many hours they could use it. So that's, that's very ambiguous. I don't know how much that could end up costing. And when I look at the friendship cities, they talk about that there wouldn't be funding and, but you would provide gifts as well. So I don't know how much that would cost. To me, that is funding. So I would prefer that, you know, if you want to keep going on this item, that you, you could direct staff to provide the, the red line suggested by the mayor. And perhaps if this is possible, give the remainder of the council till Friday to make their own suggestions and, and work from there. I'm not, I'm not really sure how to, how to work all that together.
I wish we have a process for a council member to submit the material to be included in the agenda packet. Then this could be included in a agenda packet. Since we didn't have that, so all we have is now I have to present in the council meeting, and then we have to continue to the next meeting to, yeah. So, okay, so the direction is to continue the item and the staff would bring a red line version based on my proposed changes here for the council to consider when it comes back.
Is that a motion?
So that's a motion.
Is there a second?
Wong, second.
Any comment discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Quick comment.
Yeah.
You said staff will come back with the modification of your red line version.
Yeah.
And when will other council members get a chance to provide their input?
So when, if other council member wants to provide, do they have to do it at the meeting, in the next meeting?
Just, I would prefer that we push it out a month so that we can actually do a little more research into some of the issues that some of the other council members have brought up. And that would then, we would be able to turn it around, and then the council members would have time to digest it. And.
So maybe each council member can submit your suggested changes.
By what date? You want to do it in two weeks' time? And then bring it back in the next meetings, two weeks out?
I would prefer we bring it back a month out, a month out.
If you could send us a memo of Madam City Attorney with some guidelines and dates, that would help, I think.
Also, I think Vice Mayor Mo also want more information about the room usage, right?
And we are at 11:30, so.
Friendly amendment, can we do what we just said, which is, you know, give us, bring it back a month from now? Submit comments in two weeks and wait for the red line from the city attorney? Is there a friendly amendment second to this?
And then next, when it comes back next time, the council member should be allowed to ask questions. Because this time I submitted a list of questions the staff did not answer.
Certainly, council members should be allowed to ask questions. So did we have a second for that motion?
Yes, Councilmember Wong seconded.
I thought he made the motion.
I made the motion. I made the friendly amendment.
Chow moved, Wong seconded.
And there is a friendly amendment.
Wong made the friendly amendment.
Needs a second.
And, and so you would, Mayor, you would need to accept that.
Accept the friendly amendment. Okay.
Okay.
Let's vote.
Motion carries with Fru and voting, voting no.
And now, Mayor, should we adjourn the meeting? It's 11:30. Mayor?
Oh, yeah. So let's adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.